March 31. And I, Ms. Zachary, I guess that's basically a quick rundown of about a two-hour meeting.
Yeah. I want to say at that meeting, I expressed my, I wanted to be very upfront with Ms. Danley and the Chamber Board Representative that was there, that my personal view was that the direction we needed to take was with a private visitor center, or not pri-, if not private, one that was run by the city. I did want to be upfront with them. I didn't want them to feel like they were being blindsided at the meeting or by something I came up with later. We had a council meeting to discuss this. There is, I think, some, I don't know if the word ambivalence is right, but there's ambiguity, I think, is a better word to use, about sort of what we all want to do going forward. And it seems to me there needs to be, a need to decide a direction now, rather than drawing out the process and frankly not being fair to the chamber as we whittle away if the council isn't ultimately going to fund the chamber. I don't think it's right to hold out hope of funding and keep extending things when maybe the council's will is not to do that. Maybe the council's will is to do that. In the handouts at the council meeting, there was a very good proposal written by Carla Trussell to, that was a fairly fully developed, good bones outline of a city-directed visitor center, either with a city employee or with a private entity. And it had a, it was a very detailed plan. It outlined a way forward. It had metrics and goals, the main goals being what this council has discussed before, which is the heads and beds and increasing visitors. I think you, it's hard to make a plan for the future without a definite direction to travel. And it is my personal belief, after these months of reviewing various options, that the best way forward is to go ahead and pull the funding from the chamber and direct the city administrator to meet with the committee or the formation to develop a position, pay, and then to put an ad in the paper for that. And therefore, I'm going to make a motion to permanently pull the Chamber Visitor Center funding as of January 1, and that we create a visitor tourism position, either on the city staff or to be bid upon.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I'm sorry, yes, I was, the motion.
Could you restate the motion, please?
Sure. I move that we permanently pull the Chamber Visitor Center funding as of January 1, and that we create a visitor tourism position either on the city staff or to be bid on.
I second.
So you're, there's, I hear three parts to the motion.
And I can break that into two motions.
No, I just want to capture, because this is the first time I've heard this. Permanently stop funding one January.
Right.
The second portion is to create a tourism position. And the third is what?
That was, it was just the two parts.
Create a tourism position.
Right.
Okay. And there's a second to that motion. So the motion is by Ms. Zachary, seconded by Ms. Trussell, to permanently stop funding to the Chamber of Commerce and create a position, a tourism position within the city. I'll open the floor to discussion.
I have several concerns about that. Number one, if we're going to create a position, is it going to be funded strictly from hot tax or from city funding? Where is that position going to operate? There's so many unanswered questions in the proposal. In my mind, it's far premature, and we haven't yet, as a council, decided what we want from a terrorism bureau or person or entity. None of those things have been resolved. And I think it's far too premature to determine this until we have those questions answered and probably several others that don't come to my mind this quickly. This is a surprise to me. I suspect it is to a number of members on the council, but apparently it is the desire of some members to do that.
I'd like to say that I passed out fairly detailed discussions, and as I said, Carla's proposal was an excellent, you know, outline to proceed forward with. I'm not trying to blindside the council, but I think it's, I had a discussion with the mayor about us needing a plan, and I feel like you can't make an effective plan until you know the direction you wish to go. There's no point, and that's, that to me has been very evident in a lot of these discussions that we've had and some of the meetings, is that there isn't a direction yet from the council. I was hopeful that we would have one at our last meeting, but it kind of didn't. And so it seems to me that it's important that we go forward.
There were several proposals passed out at the meeting, and some of them, I think all of them probably had some good points, but there was certainly no discussion about adopting any one of them or picking the points from each one that we thought would be acceptable.
What I picked up on from that meeting, Alan, was that it was proposed that there be an extension of funding for the chamber. And it started, I think, a year, then it went down to six months, and then it went down to three months, and there was no one on the council at that point who, who jumped on that, for better word, to say that that was what ought to be presented. I came away from that meeting feeling like, in fairness to everybody, council needs to to decide the direction they want to take with this. My, there are concerns to me, having to do with economy. Everybody is tightening their belts. Everybody. City government is tightening its belt. Private industry is tightening its belt. Everybody is cost-cutting and becoming very cost-aware and cost-conscious. It is our job to, I feel, certainly why I ran to be on the council, to make sure that the money that we were supervising, the budget, was spent wisely, frugally, effectively, and, and for the best advantage of the most, largest number of taxpayers and citizens. And I think if we, I think we could fund a position for this and support for it and still have some money left over to spend on, out of the hot tax, I'm not talking about city funds, out of the hot tax, which is a quarter of a million dollars, or roughly thereabouts, that we are talking about. And that we, it's important to also maybe get some hard assets for the city that are concrete things that are lasting, such as maybe some, because that money can be spent on some other things, like perhaps some buildings at the museum that need refurbishing, other purposes for that money. Supporting other events that might, we might help to draw into town that would increase the heads and beds and the visitors. And that's just my conclusion as a person who's involved in private enterprise and who is looking at a very large amount of money that I think could be directed to be spent a little bit differently and then would have a, some money left over that, as I said, could go into these other things that are tangible things that leave lasting value for the city from year to year.
I understand what you're saying, and you finally got to the bottom line, it's money.
Yes, it is.
And finance was where I thought this came from in the very beginning, and you just confirmed that.
Yes.
You're seeing money that comes in from the hot tax that goes to the chamber as our visitor's bureau, and you have other designs for that money, if I understand what you said.
I wouldn't call it other designs. I have an opinion based on my, my experience in private enterprise, as I said, and also now my three years on the council, that there are some more effective ways to spend it that would generate some economies that would be of benefit. And that I feel very strongly that that's part of my job, is making sure we do the wisest, best, most frugal, most effective things that we can with the taxpayer money that we oversee.
That's an interesting concept. I hope we do better with that than we did with Employee Ben Fitz.
Let me see if there's any other council members that have comments.
I may.
But Doc, go ahead. Okay.
Okay. Well, last week, I had brought up the point that I'd done some research on this, and I felt like successfully incorporating the tourism visitor center with the chamber, we would need a separate board of directors, and that we would need employees specifically for the visitor center, specifically designated, that that's their job, because that's how other communities are doing it. I didn't attend the meeting with Sherry last week because I was out of town, but I was disappointed to hear that the chamber said the only way they could do that was with additional funding. There's not any additional funding available, and I think we can do a board of directors and to designate employees with the same money. In fact, Mr. Barnes has shared with some of us that Gonzalez contracted, the Chamber of Commerce was their visitor center, and they were paid $20,000 a year. So it's certainly possible to do it for less money than we're doing it. So, you know, during budget session, we instructed staff and Mr. Barnes to cut the budget significantly, and they didn't say to us, "We can't do that." They went out and did it, and they came back with a budget that I think we ought to live with. And so it's disappointing when I hear the chamber say, "We can't do it for any less than we're doing it now, and in fact, if you want anything different, we're going to have to have more money," because there's no more money to give. So again, it's about having to tighten our belts, just like the city had to tighten their belts. What I've, we've already extended the time for three months, and we did that to help the chamber with their current budget, because their budget doesn't coincide with ours. And I'd like to have seen them come forward and say, "This is what we can do differently for tourism." I'd like to have seen some self-initiative, some enthusiasm. Brady Mc- Councilman Pendleton, he said, "You know, Glenrose has a couple of events that bring in a lot of tourism, and I'd like to see chamber have a couple of events here." If I were chamber, I would be here tonight with suggestions. We've looked at some events, and these are what we can do for you. But I don't, I don't see that enthusiasm. I suggested that we have a brochure. We don't have a brochure for Stewwell. It's one of the few communities that doesn't have a brochure. Where's a prototype? If I were desperate for this money and I really want, I'd have a prototype here tonight to show me. Here's the brochure. This is what we can put together. I suggested that it was concerned that the only document we have that's given out to area hotels, that we pay part of this document with hotel tax, promotes Granbury. promotes Granbury, Perrin, and Weatherford. We're not giving the money to the Chamber of Commerce to promote other towns. I would have pulled this out of hotels the next day, but I went to Hampton Inn, and it's still there promoting Granbury, Weatherford, and Perrin on our dollar. That's very disappointing that I didn't see any enthusiasm, any creativity, anything in out of the box. This is what we're going to do differently for you. Just give us our money back. So I'm going to vote against the extension, just like Sherri, because I think we can go in a new direction and be successful and save money so that our, our citizens can see something concrete. You know, one of the things we talked about last week was that we could build an additional RV park at the park. That's perfectly acceptable, acceptable with hot tax money. We talked about helping the museum, because they have a very limited budget. And in fact, we talked about taking a penny and a half. We never, ever talked during budget session about funding the chamber at the current amount. It was a penny and a half, and then it was suggested by another council member, it, four cents, which was a surprise to some of us, but that's the direction it took. And when we had our meeting in September, I think the most disappointing thing was when I said some businesses in this town are not being represented because they're not chamber members. And by the way, I did look at the website, and those businesses are up on the website now. But when I suggested, "They're not being represented," the response was, "Well, that tells us we need to recruit some more members. We need to do a better job recruiting members." That statement spoke volumes. It told me that tourism would never be a priority with the chamber, that their goal is not compatible with ours, and I just don't think we can reconcile the two goals. I'm sorry. I think the chamber will always, their first priority will be chamber membership. Their second priority will be a visitor center. Thank you.
Mr. Sherri?
I just have a couple, few comments. I know there's an actual plan that's being voted on tonight, as far as if the city takes this over. But an city employee being responsible for the chamber, I have a concern about that, because when you're making an employee, they're not being employed. And so with benefits, et cetera, we can't do it for the, the cost that private industry could do it for. So that's a concern I have. That doesn't mean that that's, the plan isn't a good plan. Also, there was, if we do, when the government's involved, we're doing it ourselves, then we're going to fall within the requirements for purchasing, contracting, et cetera, all that rigmarole the government has to go through, where private industry doesn't have to do as much of that. And we, I know we talked about taking some of it to the museum, like a kiosk or something at the museum. That, I think is a good idea. But I'm concerned about it, the city doing it themselves, because I don't think that's where it ought to be personally, and we've talked about that.
Yes, and I'm certainly willing to modify my, have somebody modify my motion if that's a concern.
Well, tonight, the, the motion was just to pull the stuff and give direction to the city to come up with a plan. I haven't heard a specific plan. You did hint some out there.
So the, the motion, just to clarify, is to permanently stop funding and to create a position, tourism position, in the city staff.
Okay. Well, then I, I'd have a concern with, with that part, so I may make a, well, anyway, that's, that's, I have some concerns about that. And then the last thing is knowing how, I mean, when we set up CETA, look about how long it took us to create the organization and get it up and operating. We're saying doing this in January. What's going to happen in January, February, March? We're not going to have anything that much going on. From the city's perspective, we're doing it ourselves. I think that's too soon to do it. So I'd rather that the motion be that we give them until March. And I know that their fiscal year starts January 1st, but it gives us, give us an opportunity to look at a better plan down the road. And if by January or something, we can't come up with a better plan that we're in agreement with, then we ought to look at the city, back to the chamber, and ask them if they want to continue doing it. So, and, and those are my concerns. So I'd rather be, I'd rather it be a, that we make it March rather than January 1st, and that we also continue talking with them as we're coming up with our own plan. And then whoever, and the budget hearings, we talked about, whoever comes with the best plan gets the, gets the funds, gets to do it. And I think that they ought to be part of that process since they've been doing it for so many years. So that'd be just, those are my suggestions or comments.
Mary Cass, echo?
Yes.
Just real quick, I, I tell you what, I think Ms. Zachary's spent a ton of time on this. I appreciate her dedication and her time she's spent on this, so I value her opinion greatly. And I'll tell you what, I was very impressed by the proposal I got from Ms. Trussell, because that's kind of what my expectations were for all people competing for these funds, submit a similar proposal to that, and so I applaud her efforts on that. And at the other day, it sounds like to me what I think Ms. Zachary is kind of suggesting we do is, in essence, form a convention of visitors bureau. And I'm not sure of the technicalities of how we go about doing that. And I think it kind of goes off what Doug, it's kind of like that as well. So I, I can tell you right now for sure, the motion, the way I look at that motion, I think the agenda item is to consider extension of agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. And I can tell you right now, I mean, in regards to that, I, I'm not favoring that. The same, the same thing talking about September was, give them till December. I think the discussion, give them to March before, and I said, "No, that's too long. How come we can't get things done in thirty, sixty, ninety days? It's crazy." That's how anybody else would work, and so here we are back asking for an extension again. And that, that's just not, no, because if we extend it again, I guarantee March is going to come around to be another extension again. It's just the way this thing's going to go. So if we can't make a decision by today or later than December council meeting, then we don't need to make a decision, I guess, at all. And that's just, to me, is ludicrous, because we have had sufficient time. I know Ms. Zachary and other council members and the cities worked on this. Since then, the chamber has been involved as well. Yet I still don't see anything, my expectation is wherever we move forward. And so I think what needs to be done here tonight is, for sure, I think as the agenda states, and I guess maybe Randy needs to comment as well. I mean, I don't want to do anything unlawful, I guess, according to the agenda. The agenda item talks about, yes, an extension of agreement with the chamber, not to actually go create a new city position. We probably can't create that city position. Am I correct, Randy?
Yeah, I don't think you create another commission today. I don't think the motion, as it was stated, though, is inappropriate.
Is it inappropriate?
I think it's appropriate.
It's appropriate, okay.
If I withdraw the second half about the creating a position, does it then become wholly appropriate? If I just...
Well, I, I think it's appropriate the way you stated it, but you have the right to withdraw part of it.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of moving that direction. And I'd like to see, I guess, a little more detail from the city. I know Carla presented very good goals, like I said, but I'd see a little more work with the city on how we can do some technicalities on creating a position. I'm not sure if we, if I, I just couple of that today, but I'm definitely in favor of correct the city staff to move that direction and to not extend anything past December 31st, so.
Let me, let me just say one thing before we go any, any further, because Sherri, you, you said something that, that struck me. I, I want to go back to the workshop meeting and, and what, what I thought we heard as a council that night. What, what I thought we heard as a council that night was, here is a result of a meeting that, that, where you, Alan, and Carla had come up with some ideas of how you would approach solving the problem. Essentially a brainstorming session, and there were three handups that were given to us. And, and we, we talked about extending, Alan brought up extending the contract at that time, the, the funding, because of this. Because we had talked about, we, the council, need to come up with a, a proposal of what the, the performance that is expected and how we're going to measure that. And Alan was telling us, "We're not going to be able to do that. We, the council, are going to be able to do that by the end of December." So what I have been hearing us discuss in council is, we've got to define what we want. We need to say what we want to spend. We need want to say, we need to say what we need to measure. And we're talking tonight like we've, we've required that of the chamber. It's actually us that have, that have required it of ourselves to come up with. And, and so we're, the, the meeting last week when we said we're, we're not going to, last week, when we talked about this last, and there was no response to the, the funding extension, my feeling in that, in that, in that moment was, we, we, the council, as Brady just said, need to get, get moving on defining what it is that we, what we want. And surely we can do that by the end of December, which to me is, is justification for being silent on that one. And so let me, let me just ask the, the question of you, Sherri. Are we, and Alan, I guess you, you're the two that have been in, in this meeting. Are we communicating to the chamber that we are wanting an uns, a, a, a solicited proposal? Or are we communicating to them that we, the council, are defining what we, what we think the plan should be, and then we will want, we want an input from you? Which is it?
I, we, I have had three meetings, making sure I'm accurately remembering, with July, and I believe that, that each of those meetings, I have communicated the fact that, that it was my sense, going by what happened during the budget session, that they were going to end up with less money than the four, four cents. The, and at each of those meetings, I have, there has been, there hasn't been, I guess I should say, any reciprocal discussion of, of how that might happen, where we might go with that. At the council meeting, my sense was that there wasn't a sense yet, and that that is why I'm bringing this up tonight, because we need, we, we need, if we're going to go forward, we need to know what we're going forward on. Are we going north or are we going south? Are we going...
Well, Sherri, when, when y'all presented, you, you gave us three packets, and, and those, to me, were three different ideas, and you've been working on this. And so what I thought we were going to see is a, an assimilation of that information into a single proposal. I mean, if the idea was that night to give three, three alternatives and then require us as a council to, to pick one of those, that was not communicated to us that night.
Well, if you, if you, if you read the three, they're basically the same proposal. They all, there's much duplication between the three. Carla's actually was a synthesis of the, of the two documents. And we are, it just seems impossible to me, no, I take it back, not impossible, it seems to me to be a lot of work to go invest a lot of time in making a plan that the council's not going to back ultimately, until we find out where the council wants to go. So if we want to develop a, a contract for a private visitor's center, we kind of need to decide so we can go that way. If we want to keep funding and funding and funding and funding the chamber while we... I have found that deadlines are very effective at, at focusing people's attention on, on what they're going, what they should do. And if you don't ever have a hard deadline, if you don't ever come up against a hard deadline, procrastination takes place, and, and particularly in bureaucracies and in, you know, groups. And so I'm, my objective is to decide something tonight so that we can then go forward and make a plan.
Okay, so let me come back and restate my question then. Who's, who has the deadline? Is it you and Alan helping bring the council to a, a definition of what we want? Or is the deadline for the chamber to submit us a proposal?
I think the deadline is for us to come up with a direction. Asking the chamber to submit us a proposal when we haven't set a direction is very unfair to them. Stretching out this funding quarter by quarter by quarter is very unfair to them. Not, not going and, and making a decision is for, for the direction that we want.
Right.
Because we're talking about a really big deal here, Mayor. We, we, we're talking about a quarter of a million dollars, a significant amount of money, that it is our responsibility to decide how to spend, and that we have now spent since the budget session, a great deal of time, some, some folks. Alan has invested a great deal of time in this, more than anybody. And, but, but to, to, to no purpose. Asking the chamber to give us some kind of proposal when there isn't any clarity on what that proposal ought to encompass, whether they're going to, whether they're going to make a bid on it, because there's a private contract out, and we're going to have a private visitor's center out there that they can make, I mean, there, there isn't clarity.
Okay, so is another, is another way of stating your, your concern that you don't want to extend past 31 December because you want us, the council, to, to come to that conclusion prior to that? Or is kicking the can down the road another thirty days?
That's a, a big part of the motive. That is a big part of motive, but the, not the motive, but the, but the reason I want to do this. And, and, but quite frankly, the other part of it is that, that there's, I've been several months of looking at these things and, 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 and I have had conversations with people, for example, who work in doctors' offices about answering phone calls. These are private businesses, about answering phone calls, about scheduling, about handling all these things. And my conclusion is, is that a private entity or an entity that, which, and I will modify my, my, my motion, is going to spend those funds much more efficiently and much, much more frugally and actually more effectively in the end. And that's why my, my preference is that, that, that that's the direction we go. But I also, along with that preference, think that if we keep stringing the chamber along, we aren't ever going to make a decision, and that it's not fair to them either. They need, they need to make plans too.
Okay, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's like the second part of your motion is, is your conclusion of where we ought to be on 31 December. You don't know that that's the conclusion of the council, because we haven't, we haven't reached that...
We haven't voted on it, yeah.
We, we haven't, on the, on the approach.
Right. And I, and I, you know, if that ends up being this, I can, I will be happy to withdraw the second half of my motion and just stick with the first.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question for Alan, and that is, or Randy. It's relevant to the fact that we're talking about deadlines. And I feel like that we're, we are here tonight addressing this from the standpoint that we had a motion that passed, and that motion required a three-month extension, which we've all talked about, and in three months to formalize a contract. And am I wrong about that? Because there's a lot of things that were discussed. I mean, we talked about applications. We talked about, you know, trying to discern whether the contract and application should be separated or they is one, and that type of deal. And, and speaking towards the deadline, I would like to ask either of y'all two, what are the consequences for pulling the funding as we have discussed? But not spending the money for a certain time out until we can figure, we can determine the best approach for this? I mean, is there statutory or some kind of...
So your, is your question, if we don't give them the money, what do we do with it?
Well, no, my, my, my question is, we're going to do something with it. I think everyone's committed to that. But, you know, I, I've heard a considerable amount of discussion, and, and to answer that, what I'm saying is that, to me, it's irrelevant whether it's the chamber or is the city or a private entity or Steadco, or whoever can, as Doug said, put heads in beds. It goes a little bit farther than me. I want to elaborate that. But my question is that if it takes us an additional three months or it takes us an additional six months to do this, what, how are we jeopardizing ourselves from a legal standpoint? Because to me, it is more about doing what's right. And this, this whole situation, it absolutely intrigues me. I mean, it, it does. I'm fascinated with it, because fundamentally, I think this all goes back to Prop 1 in 2015, in the development of CETA. What, when that happened, and we have a certain economic environment that we're dealing in, and it doesn't matter, Steadco is important, chamber's important, you know, the... in, and it doesn't matter, Steadco is important, Chamber's important, you know, the CETA is important, and the city's important, and we should all be working together. But what happened with Prop One is it changed the role of everyone. And I feel like that the roles have been changed, and they will continue to change. We just need to figure out what is going to benefit the citizens the most. If it's Chamber and just their membership, that's important. You know, if the city can do a better job? I don't know that for a fact. Usually I lean the other direction on those kind of things. But I think it's worth discussion. And, and for me, I just want to make sure that with the money we have, and yes, to me, always the money is important, to a large degree, how are we going to benefit our citizenry with that the most? That's the way I see it. So it's a little premature for me to not, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, to decide that we're going to do this with the city. It might require another discussion, we might find some other kind of avenue. But I do think that we, we strayed a little bit from, from where we originally started on the September ninth meeting, if I, if I recall. I think it's Sep- September twelfth, meeting, whenever we discussed this. And that's what I have to say.
So are you saying you also would like the second half?
I would like the second half done, but, but more than likely, I, I will tell you, I, I think that it is unfair to the chamber to fund them past December. To me, I am strictly stringing them along, and I can tell you, I, I don't know that I wouldn't give some money to the chamber, but I absolutely would not fully fund them the way that they've been funded now. I would not do it. So.
How do I, do I just request to amend my motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor, I request to amend my emotion, my emotion. My motion and withdraw the second, second half of the motion, and just go with the motion to stop the funds December thirty-first.
A second.
Here's an amendment to the main motion to remove the, create a new tourism position within the city by Ms.-
She removed that.
Zachary, and the, second by Ms. Trussell. So that, that would remove that from the main motion. Any discussion? Okay, if not, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment. All who's in favor of amending the main motion by removing the creation of a tourism position and the city staff, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, that, motion carries, the one no from Mr. Nix. All right, so now back to the, the main motion, which is to, I guess, the way you worded it, was permanently stop funding effective one January to the chamber. So, any, any other discussion on that?
Did she say December thirty-first or January first? What did you say?
I have written down here-
She said one January.
Did she?
Yes, I did say January first.
Well, I would, I would ask a question. I don't know if there's an answer to this. Let's ask the legal question. Is there any practical impact to defunding the Visitors Bureau one, 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 twenty-eighteen?
Probably so. I, I don't know what obligations beyond January first, the, the current visitor's center has. I don't know what groups they're currently working with, so I can't give a specific answer.
But there could be events that would be given us.
There could be. I, I don't know that. Mr. Brenner and Ms. Danley are here, and they can speak for the chamber. Honestly, I don't know. But yes, there, there could be some functional issues. The primary one is, in addition to the events, after January first, we would not have a visitor's center period in our community. Folks would still go to, to the chamber, because that's where you naturally go when you're new to a community, to, to find out about the community. But as far as a tourism-centric visitor's center, realistically, even on a fast track, we're probably looking at sixty to ninety days. And it scares me when council members pick up pens, because that means you may come back to bite me. But, but, but I think-
It's now written down.
To, to stand up a visitor and convention center, or visitor and convention bureau committee, I don't think that takes long at all. I mean, that's, that's a matter for you guys. Hiring somebody, or getting to the point where we're ready to hire somebody, I would have to work with, with Cheryl to develop the, the staffing model, whether it's one person, or a director, and a, and a auxiliary staff, or support staff, I, I don't know. We would have to develop a job description or job descriptions, and then advertise the position over the holidays, which, quite honestly, having been unemployed during the last holiday season, you really don't look at ads during the holidays. I, I think realistically, subject, or subtracting a permanent physical location for a Visitors Bureau, which we would have to do it out of City Hall, that, when we started up, I'd say sixty to ninety days, probably. But there, right now, there are a lot of questions going through my mind that I would just have to sit down and not sleep over. But i- if I could, let me ponder those questions, and, and I'll send an email out tomorrow with more definitive answers. I mean, that's my best off-the-cuff answer that I can give you right now. Let me, let me do some more thinking, because this has kinda caught me flat-footed as well. So.
Further comments?
I assume that what we're saying then is, the staff will look into the option for us, and come up with a articulated plan that we would then bring to council to vote on, which would be a tourism board, hiring staff, and what wages, budgets, et cetera. All the things that were in Carla's, out of the plan, except, or one of them, what Carla's saying said. But I would assume also that if the chamber came back to us and said, here's what we would do differently, that we consider that the same time. This is just saying that as of December thirty-first, the funding is ceasing. Is that correct?
Well, I think that's, that needs to be very clear as we walk away from here tonight, because it's, it has not been clear, obviously, coming into this meeting. I think your comment earlier, Mr. Savin, is, is very important for us to, to think about. And if you take what, what's been said about the need to look at the Tourism and Visitors Bureau as far as a business process in, in the city of Stevensville, what does it look like in twenty eighteen versus two thousand and eight? Or even, even before? And so the desire by council members to reach to a, 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 how to, how to solve the problem, had, is, is, is ahead of the definition of what the problem is. And because I've heard tonight, we can do this for twenty thousand dollars, I've heard we can do it for one person, I've heard we spend too much money on it, but to date, there's been nothing put together by this council to define what it is. And it's the danger that we, as a council, have walked down the road of trying to use the budget process to create policy versus creating policy to then inform the budget. And we need to reorganize this, I believe. And if, if, if the idea of pulling money is, is to create a deadline to make us act, then good on us, because we obviously haven't, we failed to do so to date, and, and we need to. Now, who we is, is all nine of us plus the city staff. And in my opinion, we failed as a group miserably to be able to come to a conclusion to this point. And so if we tonight are committing to do that, then good on us. If, if all we're doing is jumping to a, a conclusion with no thought, then, then we're, we're in danger of, of being worse off than, than we were going into this. As I've said before, I think that this is an opportunity for us to truly, for the first time, define what we expect Visitor Bureau to do for the city, because we don't have a contract now. And to, to the good, you know, credit to, to Ms. Zachary and Ms. Trussell to bring up the idea that, hey, we need to look at this, but I, I would ask that we also have patience to, to define what, what it is. And as Mr. Harrison has said tonight, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter who does it, as long as it's done well and in the best interest of Stevensville. And we need to quit talking about who's doing it, and, and we need to talk more about what it is that we want done. Because three pieces of paper handed out to me in a meeting is not a plan. And if we're tonight telling the city administrator that this needs to be his number one priority, then we need to do that. Because between now and thirty-one December is not a lot of time to create what is arguably an organization that is comparable to CETA. And, and we need to contemplate that, I believe. It, it's really good discussion, but the, the context of time, it's like we're, we're trying to fix a, a water line, and the more we dig, the more holes we find. You know, maybe sometimes the easiest way to pull something up by rope is not next to what you're pulling, but back up on the rope and, and get full leverage of what it is you're trying to accomplish. So if the council is moving tonight to, to try to truly solve this problem by thirty-one December, then I applaud us. If, if it's to circumvent a policy development, then, then we're, we're in danger of, of wrecking the, the Visitor Bureau process, because we'll go into it ill-defined and unprepared. So, Ms. Zachary.
Respectfully, I don't, I, I disagree with some of what you said, Mayor. I don't think we are precipitously leaping off a ledge. I do think the papers that were handed out, including Carla's proposal, were, were very good starting points. I do think it is possible, private industry does it all the time, to have something in place by December thirty-first. I think it is possible to transfer phone calls, if that's, needs to be done, transfer a phone number, if, I don't know if the county chamber has a, a phone number to be transferred to somebody to answer the phone calls. We have at various times talked about multitasking. There are things that you can do during the interim while we work on a plan that, that are nimble things that the private sector does very, very well, when they need to, to respond to a situation.
Okay.
I continue to feel that the, that it is impossible to create a direction, until we create a direction, that part of what is going on with these continuous extensions is that we're drifting into a situation where, where non-action is actually what's happening out of it. Decisions need to be made, and they can be made efficiently and quickly, and, and I, I feel that way. That's my experience, I get-
Let me just ask another question then, because you're, you're concluding that actions need to be taken, but there's not a definition of what, what we're trying to achieve. So can I just ask that, that we, as we move forward in this, spend, spend the time to define what it is that we're, we're actually wanting to, to have done as far as what, what is the, if, if we were to write, and this is something I asked for six weeks ago, a position, or a description of what a Visitors Bureau would do, and how we would measure whether that is done or not? And that, that is not been done. I mean, you, you said it was a starting point, and I agree a hundred percent.
Yes, but it also, it also defined, it defined what success was going to be, it defined the goals, it defined what we were looking for. And I think that to, some of what you say works, okay? If, if I was going to a, a, I'm sorry, there was a point earlier I wanted to address, because we haven't had a contract for eleven years. So the fact that we're, there's stewing about a contract at this point is a little bit beside the point, because we still, as I said, do not have the direction to go, which in my view ought to be a private Visitors Bureau, or something set up more nimbly and efficient.
Can I ask you a question about that, just real, real quickly? Let me just ask you a quick question about that. If we're to ask a private provider to do this work for us, what do we tell them?
Go ahead.
I think we need to vote tonight-
Yeah.
-on what, on the, on the motion that's before us. And then I need, I think we need to have a work session, and we need to, as a council, discuss, do we, do we want to go forward with a private entity? Do we want to hire or employ with a hot tax? We, but Sherri's right, we just kicked this can, can down the road, we discussed it in budget session, and, and now we're spending six months of our budget funding something we said we weren't going to fund during budget session. So we've done the exact opposite of what we set out to do in budget session. And, and we need, need to have a, next week, or Thursday night, war meeting. We, we need to discuss what the council wants to do, but tonight, we need to decide that we're not going to go past December thirty-first with this, that we are going to make a decision as to which direction we're going to go.
Well, and, and, okay, and, and we'd already decided that, so it's really-
No, we haven't.
The, 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 the proposal that has come before us tonight by Mr. Barnes is to undo what we've already decided. We can take no action tonight, and it's thirty-one December, because our approval of the, the chamber's budget does not go beyond thirty-one December. I, I'm in complete agreement, Sherri and Carla, with what y'all are saying. I'm just asking both of you to present formally to the council a plan, because that's not been done for us yet. You've got some, a lot of ideas, you've got a ton of them.
We haven't been given that opportunity to do that, but, but in a work session, I think we can.
Okay, if that's what you're asking for, then we'll have another work session, and that, that's a great opportunity to please formally present a plan to the council, because we have not had that opportunity to really understand what, what a, I mean, Sherri, you yourself said it's a starting point, you know, the three, three pieces of paper that we got was a starting point. But we, we need to contemplate a formal proposal. And, and that is the direction that, that I thought, when the council turned this over to say, come up with a, a plan for us, I think the idea was for you to come back with a formal proposal. So we, we need to organize a workshop.
But we never voted on coming up with a formal plan. I think that's kinda the problem. We never voted on that.
Probably because we haven't had a formal plan.
But we never voted to tell somebody to come up with a formal plan. So.
Okay.
Somebody needs to know-
Sherri, is that what you thought you were working on?
We were working on performance measures and not on a formal plan. And the performance measures, depending on whether you're asking a private entity to do it, a public entity, or some quasi-entity in between, are, are going to be different in, in some extent. The, and we were also tasked with, with presenting this as a plan to the council, and it was discussed at one of our last meetings, that we've gone as far as we can go without some input from the council as to the direction to take. And, because there hasn't been any direct- direction to take, because the council hasn't said whether they want to go for a private, a public, a, to keep it with the chamber, to, there's been no, there's been no direction from the, I'm only one member of the council, and, and I don't care to, to keep making these decisions.
Are you gonna vote on it or talk it to death?
Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
Um, I, I don't care to be making decisions that I feel the full council needs to be in on, I guess. It reaches a point where here, this is what we found, now we need the whole group of us to, to have input on it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As he's on his way up, Mr. Mayor, the Hotel Motel, or the Hotel Lodging Association is gonna be here on the 14th. That might be a good night to, to have the workshop that, that you discussed.
Right, okay.
That sounds good.
That sounds perfect.
Real, real quick, are we getting audio on this? Because when I went back to check, the last meeting we had, we didn't have audio on a lot of this.
Yes, sir, we, yes, we have audio as of now, yes.
All right, fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a comment to clarify, because I think there's some misunderstanding, and I want to focus my comments on our meeting that Ms. Danley, myself, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, had with Mr. Barnes and Ms. Akri. First of all, it was a great meeting. It was the first time that Ms. Danley and the chamber had been invited to come and sit down for a two-way dialogue, which was some of the conversation that had come out of several council meetings. You know, the work session was a good work session, we got some valid information from that, but it wasn't a two-way dialogue, it was just an internal dialogue. So we come to our meeting and really appreciated Ms. Akri's leadership on that. I think we had a great conversation. I think July and I left the meeting with a very clear understanding of kind of what the individual council members desires were, and I think it's pretty well-known that everybody has a different opinion, and actually, we discussed that.
We did.
So, you know, I think what we really came up with was what's best for the city of Stephenville and their visitors. We're not discussing who the right person is. Maybe that's the chamber, maybe it's not. But from a transition perspective, if, if the desire for the city is to no longer contract with the chamber, there needs to be a, a fair amount of time for a handoff, for a smooth transition. So we discussed that, and I think Mr. Barnes concurred that it would be wise to have a smooth transition and a good handoff. So the, what July and I left the meeting thinking we had a great plan together, and it was this. Due to the holidays, Thanksgiving, Mr. Barnes looked at his calendar, you guys have a ton of committee meetings, council meetings, various things going on, and we determined that it would be adequate time for the Chamber of Commerce to bring back to you by 12:31, which has been asked for, and it was greatly applauded by both these two folks, a itemized, very detailed proposal of what services the chamber would provide. We would take input from all these documents that have been put together through the work sessions, and then we would price that, and we would not be very global about it, we'd be very specific about the budgets. We'd bring that back 12:31, then that would be the proposal. Then the council has January, February to discuss that, to clarify, negotiate, whatever words you want, to where then come March, your council meeting in March, you would be prepared to actually take action. Now, that provides some time, if the intent is to do your own services, that buys city staff some time to try to get a game plan together. And we discussed that, that that's a concern. If, if there's no plan past January 1, that's really not putting the citizens and the visitors of this community in the best position. So, anyway, again, Mr. Mayor, that, that was the, the census of our meeting. July left, and I left, and we've already had conversations with our board of some meetings to put, start putting those documents together. So, again, I would just say, the extension request is not another delay tactic, there's a solid plan in place with gate markers. So the gate marker one, December 31st, you, the city council, would have a detailed proposal just as you've been asking for. Then you can take action when you want. So, anyway, I, I just wanted to clarify, because I've, I've just been listening, and I've sensed that there's maybe some misunderstanding as to what our game plan was, and felt like we had a good game plan. Thank you very much.
However, I, I did feel on, in the interests of being fair and honest, I did make clear to you, though, that my view was that...
Absolutely.
And that I would not support at that time an extension also.
Absolutely, no, Sherry was very forthright.
I want to, because I really felt obligated that you guys know where I...
Yeah, no, Sherry was very forthright about her personal opinion. She's very supportive of the Chamber of Commerce as a chamber.
Yeah, I'm a chamber member.
This was not a confrontational meeting, this was a very good dialogue meeting. So, again, I think we have a good game plan in place. If you choose to vote yes on this motion that's on the floor, it's, it's a whole different plan. All right, thank you very much.
All right, we'll, we'll...
I have one question.
Okay.
The motion is to cease funding December 31st, January 1st.
Right.
But isn't that already what we have in budget?
It is.
Yes.
So this motion is just to reiterate what we've already decided?
Right.
Right.
So it's to...
So what? So the chamber was asking for an extension to go past December 31st. So if we don't take any action on December 31st, it goes away?
Then we have to have our plan in place and what we're going to do.
Correct.
Which is what you're talking about doing November 14th or whatever the date is.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna proceed to vote then, the, the motion on the floor is to... Stacy, why don't you reread the motion?
I have it as a motion by Sherry to permanently pull funding from the Chamber of Commerce effective January 1, 2018. This is the amended motion.
Okay. All right. So I guess we'll proceed to vote then. All those in, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Division.
Okay, well, the roll call. Place one.
Roll call.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
I guess I'd want to aye since we already decided to do that. I'd change anything before I'm done.
Okay. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
No.
Place seven.
Aye.
Place eight.
Aye.
All right, so that, that motion carries to, as stated. All right, the, the action that we've got out of that is, I guess to schedule this as a part of a work session on November 14th?
I don't know that that needs to be official action, but it, Stacy and I have been communicating, and it will be on the 14th agenda.
Okay.
14th of...
Of November, next Thursday. Ah, I'm sorry, next Tuesday. The, the meetings are running together.
All right, I, I would also ask that the... Is, is someone going to, to bring a, a proposal to that meeting for us to review?
We certainly can, yes. I also, at this point, should we make sure that, if there's a private entity that wishes to bring forward a proposal, that they, they could at that meeting as well?
Uh, yes, and, and how would we do that?
At, at this point, I don't know, it just occurred to me that this might be something that needs to be publicized, and hopefully, it'll be in the newspaper, among other places.
May I offer a suggestion? On the 14th, let's decide, or, or let's formulate a direction that the council wants it to go, a job description, as it were, for the visitor's center. I'm not sure that we are, I'm positive we cannot fulfill the, the obligations for procurement in, in a week.
No.
I just, I don't know how physically working 24 hours a day, and you, you just can't get it advertised that quickly. And if you did get it advertised that quickly, how do you describe what you want when...
We don't even have direction.
When we, we as staff don't have direction in
Correct.
Exactly what the council wants. And whereas we can provide the council with, with our perception of what the entity is, until we have firm direction from council as to what they would want the entity, and the entity I'm talking about is the visitor's center, not any deliverable from them, but, or, or any group to run it. But until we know what the nine people on the council desire and have a pretty much singular direction, I don't know how we advertise it or, or we do a request for proposals. Because you do need to be very specific in what, what the expectations are.
Okay, and, and here, Sherry, is my question still, based on what Alan just said, because I hear Alan saying he's putting together basically a request for proposal. What I hear you saying is, we're going to do this, and until, and, and when you say direction, I hear you say, we're going to be very prescriptive of how we're going to do it. So are we, are we coming up with a request for proposal, or are we coming up with a, an action plan of, of how we're gonna do it?
To quote a former president, I think we're trying to come up with a definition of what is, is. I, I mean, seriously, and, and I said that kind of a lot hardly.
There, there's two very different ways that this question can be answered. If we're going to say, this is how we're going to build the watch, then, then that's some of what I hear from you, Carla and Sherry, is that you want to say, we're gonna create a position at the city, it's gonna have a desk here, it's gonna do these things. So that's a, that's an action plan versus a request for proposal that says, here's what we want done, now come tell us how you're gonna do it. Are we gonna tell them what we want, are we gonna tell you what we want the city staff to do, or are we going to put together a request for proposal to ask you and the private sector and the chamber to respond to that? Which, which are we striking out to do?
Well, I feel like that's part of why we, we need this workshop, is, go ahead, Carla.
What I'd like to see us do is decide as a council in the work session after we hear the presentation from Austin. Do we want the Visitor's Bureau to be a position within the city that we use hot tax to fund? That we, do we hire an employee to do this? Do we want a private entity to bid on it? Our third light is that the councils wish that the chamber do it. We have three decisions, and we need to decide which direction we want to take and direct staff that that's how we want to go. Either hire the position, look at a private contract to do it, or give it back to the chamber. But we need to make a decision so that the city staff knows which way to go with it. We've never made that decision as to what direction we want to go.
As, as you all know, I tend to speak in analogies, and I think a great one of this situation just came to mind. What we want is we want a description of a snapshot that you want, so we can determine who the photographer needs to be. So, I, I mean, does that make sense? To, to me, it makes great sense, but sometimes it doesn't.
Not as much as anything else has happened.
I mean, you don't want a crime scene photographer to photograph your wedding. I had that done, believe it or not.
Okay, but, but here, you just said you want a crime scene photographer. The, the point, I think, the path I thought we were on was because for 11 years, we haven't had a contract, because we haven't defined what it is that we want. We needed to define what we wanted provided before we decided if we wanted a outdoor photographer or whatever.
That's what I said.
That's very different than saying who's gonna do it.
Well, I think we need to decide...
I didn't even realize a crime had been committed if we needed a crime scene photographer or not.
You can't decide who's going to do it if you haven't decided who you would like to do it, you know? So why have the chamber come up with this plan when we haven't decided if we want the chamber to do it, or whether we would like to have our own employee do it? We need to decide which direction we want to go.
And I can...
Well, now, I'll take that next step further, and I'm sorry, you're really gonna hate me now, I think I'm stupid and this, but I want all of that done. That's been my expectation from the very beginning, is I want this meeting, this, this city's proposal on what is it gonna take specifically for us to operate a CBB? I want anybody else who wants to submit a proposal, what they specifically can do for a CBB or visitor tourism, because I think that's what's gonna determine what direction we're going ahead, in my opinion. How can I sit here today and we're back here answering the same questions? How can I say, well, the city will do it? Well, I don't know what in the world's gonna take the city to go do it. So, yeah, we're gonna spend some time, the city, and figure out if the city can do this, provide these services, X amount of dollars, here's our, our options, that's the city's option. Then we can submit a basis of that, we can do an RFP, send out to whoever wants to submit a proposal on it, see what's come, see what comes back, and then we have our full options sitting all the way to whoever comes back with their answer to RFP, and there we go. Council, we have our decision to make based upon those applications.
Right.
To me, so it's all above, answer your question.
Right.
Relax, Beck, so maybe I'm the only one, but...
Brady, I, I actually thought that's what had derived from our meeting on November the 12th, that's what I thought, but, you know.
But, but Carla, what I hear you saying is we're, we're supposed to decide who's gonna do it before we decide what we want done.
Well, it wouldn't make any sense if we want to go with an employee to have them spend hours coming up with a plan if we have no intention of staying with the chamber.
Here's, here's the reason, and, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong. Here's the reason that the chamber, I believe, offered that, that, that option to us. They operate the visitor's center, they know what they do, they know what questions they're asked, they know how they respond to the questions, they know how folks come in and, and ask for the, the hot funds for, for their events. I, I, I think, and I'm not putting words in their mouth, but I think their goal in, in doing a proposal is to help us in the event that they are no longer the visitor's center, so we have a basis of understanding of how a visitor's center operates. Is that, am I way off base with it?
Mm-hmm.
And, and we can, we can do the research to find out what it is, but as, Mayor, I think you said, we have to go to the experts to find out. Well, in this case, the chamber is the expert, and that's, that's what the, the result of our meeting the other day was. It was not necessarily for them to come back and say, this is the contract that we want, it was for them to come back and say, this is what we do, and here's what we want to, here's what we believe it's gonna cost to do it. And, and that was perhaps not completely understanding what our marching orders were, but when the comment was made that we needed to talk to the, to the experts, that's where I thought we were headed with, they can tell us the day-to-day operations of the visitor's center, and we can go from there. But I, apparently I was wrong.
Well, I, I, I think unfortunately, we're, we're... Here's what I think we need you to do, just to help us and, and... I think what Alan, here's what I think we need you to do, just to help us and for us not to prolong this, this topic anymore this evening. I need you to put into words the problem that we are seeking to solve, and have us agree on that, in writing. Here's the problem we are solving. And have that, certainly you can have that by the fourteenth.
Absolutely.
That's not asking you for a contract or a proposal, it's what in a paragraph is the problem we are trying to solve? And let's see if we can't nail, nail that down, coming out of that meeting and be more informed based on what, what's said in that meeting by this hot expert that's coming in here.
Thank you.
Does that, does that seem fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and if council members have input, you know, please feel free to provide those to Alan moving forward.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
July, Greg, you'll be, I think there's bus tracks all over your back. I appreciate what y'all have done for the city for numerous years in numerous ways. Your service has not gone unrecognized and unappreciated, and I, I hope that we will be able to continue to do business with you in the future if, if we, if we, as a council, can ever determine what we want, and we don't have a good track record of being efficient or timely in the things that we decide, but hopefully we can come up with something. But thank y'all for your work for the city and for your attendance tonight.
Any other? Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
The polls are just closing there, they won't have any yet.
I might smoke one, man.
Yeah, I know.
You're running this.
I don't know why we're doing the press conference. All it is is like, what you're gonna do for the city and. Did you not hear Carla when she said she went to their web on the comic side? And the cars in their web said, we didn't have theaters, we didn't have an antique shop. It was so memor-.
It's supposed to be, absolutely. I don't dispute that. Well, we did.
Well, I don't think we submitted for it.
Did my best to refrain from insulting them to their state.
Well, you know, Greg, who thinks he's a smart guy, tell him. And he's no dummy.
No.
But hell, he said he was thinking silver spoon, gold is with him.
The problem is, the problem is.
Just because I didn't get a number.
I had talked to doctors and nurses and stuff, the exact same stuff they did for their answer phones. Fill out requests, call, you know, it's equivalent. The chamber is not efficient. I don't wanna sit here and bash my head, but.
I cut them up to these.
Are we having an executive session tonight?
I haven't made.
I haven't held up my end.
Wait, I don't like that.
Sherry, I want you to know, I, I don't, I don't care who does this.
Oh, I know that.
I'm just concerned that we.
I'm, I'm trying really, really hard.
Well, it's not gonna be very easy. Well, why don't they, why don't they make sure that that was a prime count of plans? Oh, I lost it. No, thirty-two forty-eight against ninety-one four, early voting.
I might be wrong, I thought it was like ninety-ten, it might be like ninety-eight-two.
What is it, Matt?
What was it?
Here's your early voting.
Oh, early voting.
This is, early voting's a different. You're right, Alan, thirty-two forty-eight against ninety-one four, an early voting.
Can they pull it out on, on the votes for today?
Okay, how much? I guess wrong. You know, it's so interesting, because your numbers are not like you got with the three points. That's just about it. What were the chances that, that usually turns out?
Right here, favorite, even, even, I don't know. I like even numbers, do that even number.
I wasn't really contributing.
Well, I'm not sure. High-level media over here.
I guess so.
Yeah. Hi, John.
All right, and you?
I should have asked you prior to this, do you wanna present your request for the utility extension, or do you want me to present it as?
I'd like you to do it, because I'm actually gonna have to run early.
I'd be glad to do it as a, as a committee recommendation.
Yes, sir.
That's fine, be glad to do it. If it fails, though, you know, it's, it's not my fault that you weren't here to support it. I don't mind, John.
I think it might be a tie of ninety-five percent.
That's what we talked about. She's pulled up closer to Kenny than you.
Well, I try to space it out and make sure I'm not overlapping. You know, if you ask me from a practical sense, that's a good reason to go down to seven councilmen, but, you know, everybody doesn't see it that way, but have more room up here and around the table of wisdom.
I wish that we had more of a view, so we could see the other people.
See, that's why I, I feel like when I get interested, I lean forward, I always feel like I'm blocking the view.
No, no, but I, and I look around you, over your shoulder, whatever, it's not a problem, but I'm the same way, because what I wanna hear what Doug is saying, I've gotta lean pretty far out to see Doug. I can see you and Sherry and Jerry, and that's about it.
All right, I'm gonna call us back into session here.
Jerry's not back yet, Mayor.
Seven oh, seven eleven.
Okay.
We'll proceed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Jeremy still here? All right.
Who's that, Jeremy, who?
And I'll open a public hearing on case RZ twenty-seventeen zero zero six, applicant Tim Thompson, TM Rental Partners. Turn the floor over to Jeremy.
They are requesting a rezone of the property located at nine twenty Old Heiko Road, being Lot eleven, Block one fifty-two of the Twenty-Six Hundred City Edition, City of Stevenville, from industrial to B two, which is retail commercial district. The comprehensive plan does project this to be a retail commercial business district. The water, the property is served by a six-inch water main located on Old Heiko Road, as well as a six-inch sanitary sewer main. Property is fronting Old Heiko Road. The existing zoning in the area, the property for which the rezoning is requested, is surrounded to the north by industrial and retail and commercial to the southeast and west. Staff does not have any objections to the rezone of the property, nine twenty Old Heiko Road. Proposed zoning aligns with the comprehensive plan and similar zoning is nearby. Planning and zoning commission did unanimously vote to recommend approval to council for this rezone.
Okay. Any questions for Jeremy? Mr. Nix.
Jeremy, is the property, I'm gonna call it north of that, the proposed rezone, is that the parking lot that's behind the Alsup station there?
Yes, sir. When, uh, when that was, when that was done, it should've been replatted and rezoned, it was not, and we are working with the current owner, probably the next P and Z meeting, they are bringing that, we will, we'll bring that back to you guys, hopefully December or shortly, to get that replatted and rezoned, the rezone part of it.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeremy?
Thank you.
So all that will be commercial, retail, except for the single family across the way, but the rest of the area will be.
All right, no further questions for Jeremy. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the case? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Now we'll close the public hearing, and I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty-seventeen zero dash R O dash seventeen, the rezone from the classification of industrial to B two retail.
Second.
All right, motion, Mr. McClinton, second amendment Zachary, to approve ordinance twenty-seventeen oh seventeen, to rezone nine twenty Old Heiko Road, Lot eleven, Block one five-two of the South Twenty-Six Hundred City Edition, from industrial to B two retail commercial business. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. All right, we'll move on to the Finance Committee report. Mr. Sivin.
Thank you, sir. We have a finance committee meeting on October twenty-second. We have two items, there are actually three items in the work session, but we have two items we need to, ready to for positive vote tonight, and the committee did vote unanimously, bring both of these to the simple council. I want to consider approval of the contract for banking services, I know that Monica gave us some information about that, and also about the ambulance supplemental payment thing that we've heard a part about tonight.
Hi, Monica.
Mayor, council. We're required to go out for our P on our bank depository contract. We did that process, we had two responders, Texas Bank and First Financial, and due to the interest rate and the charges, and then also, actually, Texas Bank will not be charging us any sort of fees, and then also the First Financial did not include their audited financial statements like they were supposed to. The recommendation was to go ahead and continue using Texas Bank as our bank depository.
All right, any questions for Monica?
Mayor, I move that we approve the contract for banking services presented in the committee tonight, council.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Sivin, second by Mr. McClinton, to approve the contract for banking services as presented. Any discussion? If all proceed to vote, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries unanimous vote.
I also submitted the quarterly investment report, I don't know if there's any questions on that. And then for the ambulance supplemental payment program, you heard our EMS biller talk about that a little bit. We anticipate to get some, some money from the state, we have to submit an application, and as part of that process, we have to, there's some formal policies that we have to implement. Come on up here and we'll talk about it. One of them is our FAD debt, FAD debt, non-opinion policy.
We, we talked about this in the committee meeting the other night for those of you all that were there, and this is a supplemental program that the state put in effect, and we talked about it during budget meetings, if y'all remember, and it was, it looked a little bit more lucrative back then, and they changed it a little bit, and then they revamped it, and it's a lot better than it was in the midterm, but maybe not as good as it was when we were looking at budget. We're looking at right now, our estimates are that we're gonna be reimbursed somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars for stuff that we're not getting from the people that just can't afford it, or, or it's turned down by other entities or whatever. And the documents you get that you're approving is the application for that, and it formalizes some of the, the write-off plans and everything that we've, we've had in the past, and this puts them in writing and form, formalizes.
Any questions for Chief?
Well, dude, did she say, I think I heard her say, that the, the application would be done by December, and you would start making these collections in December?
Yes, we anticipate, we anticipate that we will get, if y'all approve it tonight, we'll get all the paperwork signed this week, get it to them. We're looking at a five to ten day approval down there, and we'll start putting, we'll start collecting the data December the first. Now, we won't actually get a check until March of nineteen, I believe.
After March of nineteen, we are required to turn a report of all of our runs and revenue and, and what we didn't get paid for. It has to begin, it'll go from the timeframe of December first until September thirtieth of eighteen. We have to have the report submitted to them, to the state, by March thirty-first, and it would be at some point after that timeframe that we would, they would run their calculations and determine how much money that we would, we'd get back. After that, it goes on to October to September, reporting, still reporting in March, and then getting the money at some point.
We won't actually get a full year this year, because we're starting a little later.
So always a six-month lag, basically?
Yes, and I think they do that because it kinda runs with the timing of getting your audit finished, if you're on a federal fiscal year, and you have to have all your schedule of federal awards and everything up to the, into the federal government, I believe, like March first or March thirty-first. So I think that's kind of on a, run of that one.
Any other questions?
I think two things, one is, one of the reasons for doing this is money. To be honest with you, that's come out of money, Alan. But it's because we're writing off right now either through adjustments or non-failure to pay, close to a million dollars a year in annual services. And so everything we can do to recoup to some of that budget is important. And in addition to that, the policy, I wanna make sure I understand, the policy says that the bad debt comes back to the committee, to the council for write-offs. In the fut, in the past, it's just, it's been staff decision, and in the future, this policy won't mean that we have to discuss that write-off. So just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
That'll be one change in the way that we're doing business currently, is the finance committee will be the committee that will be determining what we've wrote off, and we'll have some set forms that people will need to fill out to request the reduction of debt, and then it'll have to be over.
All right.
If there are other questions, then I'll, I'll move that we approve the ambulance supplemental pay, or participate or apply for the ambulance supplemental payment program.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to approve the ambulance supplemental payment program. Any discussion? We'll proceed to vote then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. And thank y'all for the work on that, I mean, it's a lot of paperwork to get that going, and, and so, Chief, thanks for your work on that, and Monica as well. Mr. Sivin?
Yep, that's all, that's in work.
All right, Mr. Nix, Public Works Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. We also met that same evening. We also met that same evening, one of several meetings we had that evening, and the first item on our agenda that evening was a proposal from the SEDA executive director, Mr. John Hubbard. A part of SEDA's charge and a part of their goal is to encourage economic development in various parts of the city. Mr. Hubbard has come with a request to extend utilities along three seventy-seven from an existing business, passed two vacant lots to another business that is currently developing. Their proposal is to go ahead and fund this from SEDA funds, and then SEDA will be responsible to collect the pro-rata charges from those other property owners when those properties develop. It was the committee's thought, and it was our discussion, that that was a good use of the SEDA funding to encourage the development specifically in that area. Mr. Hubbard also conveyed to us that evening that they are looking at other areas that they may want to also invest some of the SEDA funds in, in the infrastructure, which is a good use and an acceptable use of their funding. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request from SEDA to expend the twenty-five thousand dollars for the utility extension in that area, and I would put that in the form of a motion that we, as a council, approve that.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Nix, second by Ms. Tressel to approve the request by the National Economic Development Authority to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars for the extension of utilities on West Washington Street. Any discussion? Not, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote.
Next item on our agenda, Mayor, was a proposal from Pipeline Analysis LLC. Several years ago, we undertook to go through our entire sewer collection system, evaluating and mapping and noting deficiencies, problems, and other areas in that. Pipeline Analysis was the company that we contracted with at that time because that is their business exclusively. They have provided to the city invaluable information because they provide GPS coordinates for manholes. They locate taps, they locate all the lines, they are a very good company, and they provided valuable service to us. This item was funded in the budget, they came in slightly under the amount that we had funded for it, and I, the committee, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the contract for professional services with Pipeline Analysis to perform an evaluation of Sewer Basin Five, Phase One. And at this time, I would make a motion that we approve the agreement with Pipeline Analysis for that evaluation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. McClintock to approve the contract with professional services agreement, excuse me, with Pipeline Analysis LLC, for an evaluation for Senatorial Sewer Basin Five. Any discussion?
It was, my understanding, we were going to make sure that there were other opportunities to bid on this. Did we do that to the other?
I thought that was on number four and on number two.
Number four.
Any other questions? We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries unanimous vote.
Next item on our agenda was an ordinance discussing the small cell nodes. That went far above my pay grade, but at the same time, staff provided us with a significant amount of valuable information. It's my understanding that we need to approve the design manual, and then, following that, approve the ordinance. I think we can do that simultaneously, if I understood what Mr. Barnes said. The committee voted to do that and to approve the design manual, which outlines the areas and specifics of the systems, and then the ordinance which controls that. And I would make that as a motion for the council to consider.
Okay, motion by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. McClintock to approve ordinance twenty-seventeen zero eighteen, use of city rights of way for small cell infrastructure. Any discussion? Not, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries unanimous vote.
Our last item that evening was the drainage in the Spring Bouquet area. We had several citizens who live in that area that came and voiced concerns. They showed us pictures, I think one of them even had some video of some drainage problems that they were experiencing in that area when we had extremely heavy rains. We considered briefly a contract with an engineering firm to help us design, well, help us to evaluate, and then perhaps design some remedies for that. It was the consensus of the council at that time that this was an item that we probably needed to open an opportunity for other firms to look at and perhaps provide proposals for before we made a final decision. This is an ongoing problem in that area. No vote was taken at that time, but I believe staff is working on trying to develop some other proposals that might help us with this situation in this area at this time. There was no action of the committee, and there's no action of the council necessary at this time. That was the end of our meeting, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Nix. All right, now we'll move Dr. Hubbard. The Type B Economic Development Authority update.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Just wanted to update you on a couple of projects that we've got going on.
Yeah, I have control, don't I?
Let me go on and give you an update on a few projects. Project DS is the Southwest Rail. We're a finalist for the position, we're one of one or two. But talking to the site selector, the other site has a building that is in play, and they're leaning towards the other building, but it's, we're still, haven't been eliminated, but that's where we're going with that. Project Blue, I talked to those folks almost every day, and you know, we're not going to have the executive session today, so I said, what do I tell them, Jeffrey? What do I tell them?
Wait, we are going to have the executive session, but I doubt any action will come out.
I'll take that, I'll take that back. But what shall I tell them? They're working through the details of a three-eighty agreement. They're excited to be here, and I'm going to tell you, maybe they know this, but the property has closed. They've closed in all three parcels, and so they're excited about being here. Strikesville, we met with them, Jeremy, the city administrator, and myself met with them this week. There are some revisions to the plan. SEDA and probably council will get that back, we may have some modifications to that. We'll see after we talk to, after SEDA gets it, and come back with some modifications on that. Red Mercury, still, I guess it's a, the plan is red, but it's a siding project. We are still in contention with that, been emailing back and forth, have been asking questions about that. And the same way with Project ASWP H two O, which are water line, water pipes and sewer pipes. Now, I'm going to go in and piggyback what council member Nix said. When talking to some of the site selectors, and this goes back to what they said about having shovel-ready sites and sites that have infrastructure, and he says, John, he says, one of the things you could do, you could talk to both your board and to the council, is to have sites that are ready, especially in rural sites, he says. Because a lot of sites, what you're competing with, you're competing with sites that are shovel-ready, that have water and sewer and gas that are already there. Because if you don't know this, these developers are risk averse. They don't like to have, take any chances with anything. So if we can present a site that's got the water or the sewer that's in place, that we can go on and we can say, hey, we've got this, move in. So that's something for us to think about, so much so, our SEDA board has been having some workshops. We're having another one this Friday on our day off. And we're going to meet, and we're going to talk about getting a specific direct, excuse me, direction that we can take so that we can focus on, laser focus on what we need to do to bring the city forward on that. I was already told by, looking ahead, told by Stacy that applications, we have three, two, probably two vacancies. There are three, there are positions that are up, two, at least two vacancies. Those applications are due, but, oh, it was changed. Somebody changed that, thank you, by Thursday, November ninth. So that's changed. And then also, just kind of looking ahead, I'm not going to hit everything. I'm going to actually be heading home this morning to go to bed early so I can get up tomorrow morning and heading out to the Texas Conference on ICSC, which is the International Conference of Shopping Centers that's in Dallas. So I'll be leaving early this morning, so I'm going to take off and try to get a few hours of sleep. I already have requests then to go visit some retail people, I will do that. And I also have some interviews, quote, interviews set up with some people, some retailers as well tomorrow. As I mentioned earlier, we've got the workshop that's happening on Friday. One of the really things that's really neat that we're doing, we're working with Tarleton and the STEM reception that we're having on November twenty-first. And, you know, there are a couple of things with economic development. You can either attract economic development, and you can grow your own economic development by encouraging entrepreneurship, and that's what this program does. And so, got that. Probably the last thing I mentioned, which I think is really important to this area, is that we've got our district meeting at COG on January fifth. That's a couple of months off, but it's right around the corner. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions for Jolly?
I had a question. What time is the meeting on Friday?
Oh, nine-thirty.
Okay. And is it at the airport?
Yeah, because you're close, we're close here, so we're going to have it at the airport.
At the airport.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now the consent agenda?
Move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McClintock, second by Mr. Pendleton to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved as presented, unanimous vote. Comments by city administrator, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, applications for boards and commissions are due by Thursday. That's November the ninth, and for anybody that's interested, there are applications on the table under the Stevenville sign. City offices, except for SEDA, will be closed on Friday, November the tenth. There is a Veterans Day ceremony at the courthouse at nine AM on Saturday. That's actually Veterans Day. The nominations committee will meet Tuesday, November fourteenth. City offices will be closed for Thanksgiving on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And there's the holly jolly on Friday, December the first. I also wanted to remind council that I will be out of town, November twenty-seventh through, and I'll be back at work on December the eleventh. For the December meeting, Jeremy gets to sit here and answer your question. That's, that's all I got.
Okay. Questions for Alan? All right, council members. Mr. McClintock, Ms. Tressel?
No.
Savine?
I just want to say, it's a terrible thing what happened in South Texas this last weekend. I happen to be in a church, six miles away from that church. You shouldn't have heard that. And, you know, you never think that stuff will happen in your community. It's a symptom of our society. Chief deals with a lot of issues like this that he sees a whole lot more than we do. I hope that we appreciate the law enforcement and the way they keep us safe. And also, I want to say thank you to the guy who stepped in and did something to stop the man. That is, it was a terrible thing, we need to keep them in our prayers.
I'm just going to thank the chief and his police department down there for making us be hopefully one step closer to being Polaris Ranger Town, USA. We all know, they filmed a video this week across the town, I think it's pretty neat. You saw, I saw them anyways riding across. We're our current Polaris Rangers. I don't know if we have all the details back on when the voting starts to be chief.
No, I think we're still getting on November twenty-seventh.
The, the video is going to be posted for, on November twenty-seventh. Voting will take about three weeks. I'll send out an email to everybody who can solicit anybody because you can vote one time a day, every day, for three weeks.
So I look forward to the personal use of my ranger here pretty quick.
All right, good deal.
Alan, while I'm thinking about it, we have some charter business that we need to take care of that results around a committee, and I have not, I purposely not brought that to the forefront because of everything we do in August and September and that type of thing. But we need to look at a time to where that we can, you know, meet.
Stacy and I are working on the January dates, and that is one of the, one of the meetings that we're planning.
Okay, fair enough. I just want to bring that to your attention, so, thank you.
Sure. All right. I just wanted to add to the calendar of events, just a reminder, the reason that the Veterans Day ceremony is taking place at nine AM, there's a Veterans Day parade at eleven AM, and then the Military Appreciation Game at Tarleton at two PM. So if you're going to go out to the courthouse at nine, you can go see the parade on Harbin Drive. It'll go from Ranger College Campus to, up Harbin Drive to the baseball field. And then the Military Appreciation Game will be at two PM.
Do we know the results of the election?
Yes, they do. They know, are we done?
Is that all?
Okay, the, at this time, I'm going to call us into executive session in compliance with the provisions of Texas Open Meetings Law, section five-five-one zero eight-seven regarding economic development.